This meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Willmet. I'll ask the clerk now to please call the roll.
Trustee Sullivan?
Here.
Trustee Barrow?
Here.
Trustee Dodd?
Here.
Trustee Kersman?
Here.
Trustee Kennedy? Trustee Plonket?
Here.
President Polinski?
Here. So we're all here. We obviously have a quorum. This meeting is being conducted remotely via Microsoft Teams. For those watching this video in the future, the state of Illinois is currently under a state of home order, which was issued by Governor Pritzker. The coronavirus global pandemic, as a result, all in-person village governmental meetings have been canceled. However, the state has suspended the Opens Meetings Act to permit electronic meetings of governmental bodies like the village board, and tonight we are conducting our business in compliance with the guidelines from the state. As usual, this meeting is being broadcast live on our local access, local cable access channel six. It is also being broadcast on the Internet on YouTube Live, and the URL for that is Youtube.com user villageofwillmetlive. If you'd like to participate in the meeting, that is the place you need to watch it, not just on channel six. Recording of the meeting will be archived on the village's website, as we do with all of our other televised public meetings. Now, a remote meeting obviously requires a different mechanic for public participation, so to ensure that our residents, business owners, and other interested parties have the opportunity to participate in this meeting, we have solicited public comment prior to the start of the meeting via email. So if you sent an email to publiccomment@willmet.com prior to the start of the meeting, our staff will read the email during the public comment portion of our agenda. Now, if members of the public who are watching the broadcast would like to participate during our designated public comment periods, you may submit your comments through YouTube Live at the appropriate time, and a member of the village staff will read your comment to the village board. All comments from the public will be recorded into the meeting minutes, as we typically do. Now, before each meeting, the board receives a packet of agenda materials. These materials are also posted on willmet.com on the Friday before our meeting, so that residents and other interested parties can review these very same materials that the board members receive. This week's packet contained 276 pages. The rest of my opening remarks are typically directed towards functions that happen only in a live meeting, so I will move into the agenda. We've already covered roll call. The next item on the agenda is item two, which is public comment. At an in-person meeting, during the public comment section of the meeting, individuals are allotted up to three minutes to address the board on an item which is not on the agenda. However, as I said, this meeting is being conducted remotely, so I will now ask the staff whether there were any public comments submitted by email prior to the meeting.
The only comment we received was relative to the service business grant program, so we can address that when that item comes up.
Okay. Are there any individuals, or if you are watching on YouTube Live, you should submit comments now for the village staff to read to the village board. So we'll pause for a minute here to allow people who are interested in submitting via YouTube Live to do that. I want to make sure people have an opportunity, in the event there are people out there in the Internet watching us.
They're like this big. Go ahead.
Okay. Were there any comments received via YouTube Live?
This is Alex Artiega. As of right now, there are no comments on YouTube.
Okay. So we'll move on to item three, which is the consent agenda. Items that are not normally debated by the village board are placed on the consent agenda. And tonight, again, all items beginning with the number three are on the consent agenda. So tonight, that means items 3.1 through 3.18 are on the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are up for approval tonight. If the item is not removed by a member of the "audience," put that in quotes, and is not removed by one of the trustees, the item will be approved, and it will not be discussed. So I will once again ask the staff about whether there have been any comments from the audience. Did the staff receive any requests in advance to remove any of the items from the consent agenda?
We did not.
Okay. Now, again, people, if you're watching on YouTube Live, this is another opportunity for you to participate in the meeting. So if any of the people that are watching on YouTube Live would like to remove an item from the consent agenda, we'll pause a minute here to allow people to submit that request, which is a lot longer than I give people in the public meeting when they're sitting in front of me, and I can see if they raise their hands. But with technology, we should allow for a little more time. I have actually started timing this, so I am going to let a full minute elapse before we move on. Did we receive any requests via YouTube Live to remove any of the items from the consent agenda? Alex, I can't hear you, but I think you're saying no.
Sorry about that. Correct. There are no comments.
Okay. So are there any items that any of the trustees would like to remove from the consent agenda? I'll give you 30 seconds or so, in case you're having any technology issues as well. But maybe like 15, 20 seconds.
On the consent agenda, here we are. That's on the minutes. The emergency disaster declaration, did we plan on discussing that at all?
We have a presentation of the assistance program under the administration committee.
Okay. I wanted to clarify the length of time on that disaster declaration.
I guess a question for Corporation Counsel Stein. Can you answer that question in the context prior to it being on the consent agenda, or should we pull it off and have a motion?
We can discuss it really quick, and just if that answers the question. The length of it is going to go to the next meeting, which is April 28. So the way these declarations are going to work is that they can only be extended until the next time we meet. So they're going to be on the agenda for as long as we need them to be on the agenda. Hopefully, there won't be that many more, but it'll be until we meet. If for whatever reason we cannot meet, then it'll extend until such time passed the two weeks until we actually have a meeting. Does that answer your question, Trustee Plonket?
Yes. I was confused about the seven days on there.
So the seven days, when the mayor issues a declaration on his own, absent of a village board meeting, because obviously we can't plan for emergencies, those extend only to seven days or until we meet. The amended declaration this time was done one week ago to allow for certain things to be included into it as an amendment, but that's why we're now essentially ratifying that and proceeding with two more weeks, continue this for two more weeks.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Got it. Any other, I guess, questions or any other items that anybody would like to remove from the consent agenda? Okay. May I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
That sounded like that was Trustee Sullivan. Is there a second?
Second.
Trustee Kennedy, I think, was in there first. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll on the motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Trustee Sullivan?
Aye.
Trustee Barrow?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Sorry. Sorry. Aye.
Trustee Kersman?
Aye.
Trustee Kennedy?
Aye.
Trustee Plonket?
Aye.
President Polinski?
Aye. So the motion carries. The consent agenda has been adopted. I will move on to the next item. You may notice I didn't bother to tell people they can leave the meeting, because we're not in the meeting. I'll move on to the next item, which is report of officers. First up is our village manager, Mr. Berman.
No report.
Next report is from our Corporation Counsel, Mr. Stein.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
The next item on the agenda is item five, which is the report of the Liquor Control Commissioner. There's no report tonight, so we will move on to our Standing Committee reports. First up is Land Use Committee, item 6.1, Trustee Barrow.
All items are on the consent agenda.
Next up is the Finance Committee, Trustee Kennedy.
Tonight, we'd like to present the fiscal year 2020 general fund operating, engineering program, and capital equipment replacement fund expense analysis.
Okay. Thank you, Trustee Kennedy. This is just a presentation. There are no decisions for the board tonight. I certainly don't have to tell everyone the times that we're living in right now are fairly uncertain with the coronavirus pandemic and the governor's stay-at-home order. So the staff is being diligent. They are looking at potential cost-saving options in case we need them. Hopefully, the board members have had a chance to watch the video that Mr. Berman and Ms. Malloy put together on the 2019 financial results. That was very informative. But to provide further context for some future decisions we may have to make, I've asked the staff to work on some revenue scenarios that they should be able to share, hopefully next week, you know, sort of looking at a high and a low, and what we might be looking at, depending on the duration of our current situation. So with those introductory remarks, I will turn it over to Mr. Berman.
All right. Thank you, President Polinski. I am going to try to share my screen here and pull up the PowerPoint presentation, so bear with me one moment. All right. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. So first, we just want to start out and assure the board and assure the community that our financial position is strong. In fact, we're probably in the strongest position we've been in decades in terms of our general fund reserve level. And as this slide shows, we have $15 million in reserve. It's about 42% of our operating expense. And as the board may recall, Moody's, in terms of maintaining a AAA bond rating, wants us to be at least 30% reserved. So we are well above that right now. That said, we don't want to put our head in the sand, pretend like we're not going to run into financial problems this year, and continue to spend our budget just like it is a normal year. So the purpose of this presentation is to, just to provide the board an overview of the expenses that we've identified right now that we believe have a minimal impact on our operations and on the services we provide to the community, and that we can defer, at least for the time being, until we have a better feel for where our revenues are going.
And just so everybody feels like it's a regular board meeting, I will regularly interject here and interrupt the staff. Just one comment for context for the board members. When I joined the board, consistently, the Moody's credit review would say that our reserves were light, and this was a credit negative for the Village of Willmet. And now we have built the reserves up sort of slowly and gradually over the past, really, decade, to a level now that we're actually, it's actually a credit positive, which is, you know, a testament to the sort of financial management that the staff has undertaken over the past decade.
Right. And to that point, during the depths of the recession, our reserve actually dipped below $3 million. We're nowhere near that. If we were, we'd be very concerned. But we are still concerned as we move forward, because we don't know what we don't know. We don't know how long the situation's going to go, how long it'll take for the economy to fully recover, and what our business climate is going to look like when we're back to normal. So what we want to do is just walk through some expense savings tonight. And as you can see on this first slide here, we are already planning to draw down our reserve by more than $4 million over the next several fiscal years. And what we don't want to do is have that drawdown replaced by a loss of revenue that we can't at least offset in portion by some expense saving. We know we're going to end this year in a deficit position, most likely. We're not going to be able to save more money than we lose, but we want to try to offset as much as we can.
Hey, Mr. Mike?
Yes.
Going back to the reserve, how, just, the reserve's at 15 million, I think it's actually at 15 million 30. How did that get to be almost $900,000 higher than what we have in our budget that we showed residents on the website?
So when we put the budget together, we put that reserve projection and the year estimates together in August and September. So we've got four, four-and-a-half months that we're projecting that we don't know. So, you know, we had some larger nonrecurring permits come in. We had the sale of Westlake Plaza, which was a nonrecurring real estate transfer come in later in the year. So those we didn't anticipate or know about. We had initially thought we were going to be over budget on personnel, wages, and benefits. We had some staff turnover in the late third and fourth quarter of the year that saved us some money. And then we had a really mild winter in November, December, and we didn't have to call out our contractual snow plowing company as much as we do historically. So we based our projections on our historic activity. So we saved, you know, substantial dollars there, as well as rebidding our janitorial contract that happened after the budget was prepared. So that was a fairly significant savings. And then some of it was timing of grant reimbursements for projects. So Locust Road and Skokie Hibbert grant reimbursements that come in from the state or county, the timing of that is really up in the air, and they came in later in the year when we weren't necessarily expecting them. So when you put that all together, that's what moved the needle, about $900,000.
Had we known that? I guess, had we known that, is there a way to figure out what our tax levy should have been to meet, you know, the obligations? I'm trying to figure out if I'm asking the question the right way, but had we known, I mean, because being up almost $900,000 is a significant growth, and I feel like, should, did we over, could we have lowered our tax levy in 19, or for this year?
No, because when we're looking at our tax levy for fiscal year 2020, we're matching it to our projected 2020 revenues and expenses, not what is happening in the fiscal year prior in 2019. So, you know, what would happen is we could have been more aggressive in how we planned to spend on that reserve in 2020, assuming, you know, an extra $900,000, but it wouldn't have changed how we would have projected that levy.
Yeah, it's sort of a balanced budget regardless of what the reserves are, right, Mike?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'd actually like to ask a follow-up question that Trustee Sullivan asked related to that, though. Is there anything we can do to change our budget process, however, such that if we're really relying on August and September kind of financials to, you know, to kind of get to where we need to be on our budget? We don't actually really, we actually finalize the property tax levy when? And the first, do we have to do that the last weekend, the last meeting in November, or we do that the first weekend of December?
We do it at the last, the first meeting in December.
Okay. So I guess I'm just wondering if there's anything we can be doing in our budget process so that before we finalize the property tax levy in December, if we're using August financials, if there's anything we can do before we finalize that, such that we're using more current information when we make, when we look at, when we make our final property tax levy? Because I think as a board, we spent a significant amount of time looking at how we could find $500,000, whatever, for roads. And I think, I think the question that Trustee Sullivan's bringing up, but I think is a good one, is, well, 900,000 of that was actually sitting in reserves that we weren't aware of.
But the difference, the difference here is the $500,000 for roads had to be recurring, right? And this, a drawdown on the reserves is just a one-time shot.
We didn't decide it was a recurring. We decided like 2.75 million, but the, I thought the only part of it was recurring. You know, we don't have to get into a discussion on that today. Maybe I should go back and look at that. But regardless, I think the question is more, what can we do such that at the time that we're finalizing our property tax levy, we're not looking at a budget from August, we could be looking at a more current budget?
But where you come in on 2019, yeah, the reserves may be a little higher, or a little lower, by the way. But where you come in on your reserve level really doesn't impact how we budget, because we budget on a balanced basis, except when we're pulling down, and we pull on, you know, we're pulling down minor amounts. I mean, these amounts are planned, because the SURF is designed to be built up by nonrecurring revenue and then drawn down by these vehicle purchases. So that's by design that you're going to draw that down. Excluding the SURF, the times that we've drawn down, we're only now getting into the conversations around drawing down on reserves, because, I mean, it was only, not this budget cycle, but the budget cycle before, where we started to focus on the fact that our reserves were actually big enough that we needed to think about how to spend them and the like. So the money isn't going away. And what we've historically done is, when you're ahead, you pull up capital at the end of the year. So rather than budget for something that you might not have the money for, you pull up something when you know you have the money. So we're talking about less than a year sort of lag in all of that, if that makes sense. And we, again, you're right, Trustee Dodd, we should probably talk about it at another point in time.
And again, I agree, we should talk about it. I just wanted to ask a question, because I think it was just a big number. And I think, you know, the good news is, we're sitting in a good position today, as you said, Mike. I mean, it's nice to see 15 million, but I think we, I just want to make sure we understand that number, because that number has actually grown 45% since 2016, while revenues declined. So I actually think we just need to be a little, I just want to make sure I'm sharp enough on why the reserve continued to grow significantly more than we expected coming out of the budget process. But again, it's a good thing, it's a good situation to have.
Right. And we're using it more this year, we're using it more this year than we, I think, ever really have, in terms of pulling down reserves for items other than the SURF. So I think, I think it's part of our thought process now in the budget as to where the reserves are and how much we can use in any given year. But again, those aren't recurring revenues that you can count on every year. We may, we may find next year, when we're budgeting for 2021, if we've had to draw down 2 million on the reserve, sort of in a rainy day fund type situation, that we're not going to be comfortable using any of the reserves beyond what we've already sort of committed ourselves to, so.
All right. With that, I'm going to move on to this summary slide here of our potential savings that we've identified, and we've broken it up into three areas of the general fund. And what we're focusing on the general fund tonight, because this is the fund that has the revenues that are economically sensitive. When we talk about the water fund and the sewer fund, that's usage-based and consumption-based, and generally is reliant on the weather, much more so than the economy. So this first slide here talks about general fund operating. And when we talk about operating, we're talking about providing the services to the community, police, fire, public works, engineering, community development reviews, finance administration. So these are items that, you know, we've identified what we would consider, for the most part, discretionary, that we can defer or delay without significant impact on our community. And, you know, as the memo in the packet had talked about, we really scrubbed this budget many times during the recession, and much of what came out of the budget between 2009 and 2013 never made its way back in, except for capital. So as we worked with each of our operating departments to review their budgets and identify these types of expenses that we can push till later in the year or to next year, there isn't a whole lot to get after, and that's where we see our $300,000 savings. Now, a couple of these, I'm just going to touch on briefly as examples. Something like the third row, winter hanging baskets, that's for our downtown for the holiday season. That's certainly something we want to do. It's not necessary, but we have time now to evaluate what our financial situation is going to be over the next several months before we make a decision on something like that. Now, the next line down, LED tree lighting, we're going to outsource re-wrapping of our trees. The trees girdle, if you wrap them too tight and they grow over time, our public works staff will do that in-house. So some of that cost is material that we'll be needing, but a lot of the labor we are going to handle with our own staff. Other items here, gas and oil and contractual snow plowing are not necessarily, you know, deferral items so much as what is happening in our operations, gas and oil, two factors. One, the price of gasoline is just down, as we see when we go to the gas station ourselves. But also, you know, we're using less fuel, as a lot of our vehicles are not operating as much, public works certainly not as much, and our administrative vehicles not as much as well. Contractual snow plowing, we had another mild winter in the beginning of 2020, so we already know we're going to have a significant savings there, based on historical norms for later in the year. I think the most impactful deferral on this slide is the tree planting. That $50,000 is the spring and fall sessions of our planting program. So we did already defer the spring, you know, in what we just considered a discretionary expense and wanted to hold the line until we had a better handle on what is happening. We are continuing our 50-50 program. So if a resident does want to participate in sharing the cost, we allocate about $5,000 to that, and that would still allow us to get some trees in the ground. But this is another one. You know, as the situation progresses, we may be able to revisit this and do some of our tree planting in the fall of this year, and potentially do more in 2021, depending on how our budget is looking. So, you know, it's something we would want to catch up with over time. Tree pruning, you know, this is something we did in the recession as well, where we just scaled back our cycle in terms of how many trees we're pruning. We're obviously going to make sure we address all the hazards or problematic limbs, but there's others that can wait and be done next year or the year after, and that's what we're looking at doing here. Streetscape furniture, this was a new budget line item this year. It's replacement of garbage cans, benches, and our various business districts. So those, those products are already out there, and they're available for use. They're just starting to wear a little bit. So it's something that we could either do later this year or just re-budget again next year. So the total savings is $300,000. This doesn't include all of our natural expense savings that we do just have every year, whether that's staff turnover or, you know, additional commodity savings, whether it's on salt or other types of tools and supplies. So we know we're going to save more than what's on this slide. These are just the items we've identified for deferral. And as I said, a lot of these we'll want to re-review as we move forward and see if we can do them, you know, if our budget allows us to. So if there's not any questions, we'll jump into the engineering. But, you know, as President Polinski had said, we're not looking for any decisions tonight from the board, but if there are major concerns with any of the items we're identifying that we definitely want to do or feel like we need to review more closely, you know, that's always helpful for us to know as we're making our decisions moving forward. So hearing none, I'm going to jump to this next slide here, and I think this is probably where the bulk of our discussion would be. Once again, no decisions tonight, but we do have contracts that we plan to have on the April 28 agenda for street resurfacing, alley maintenance, and Brick Street maintenance. So we wanted to brief the board tonight, give you some time to ask questions this evening, as well as study this over the next two weeks, ask additional questions of staff, so that we can have, make an informed decision at the next meeting when we're looking to approve contracts. I'm going to run through these in maybe a little bit more detail. Bridgette and Dan are also available to answer any questions. What you see on the slide here is our staff recommendation. In the packet, and you'll see the bullet points at the bottom of the presentation, we have some additional options for the board's consideration if you wanted to save more money, or if you wanted to maybe be more aggressive and complete more of our infrastructure work. We believe what we've outlined here in our recommendation is minimally impactful and doesn't have a real long-term impact on our infrastructure. Street resurfacing and alley maintenance, we're planning to do all the work we had anticipated and we had discussed with the board as part of our 2020 budget process. The good news is, we got really competitive bids, and that's been our goal each of the last few years, has been to get our bids on the street early in the year before contractors book up with work. And we did do that this year, and we've got good bid numbers. And part of the street resurfacing, and this was a discussion we have with the board, is we want to make sure we spend that full $2.75 million budget. So we bid, we have a base bid, and then we had two alternates for additional streets if we realized good bid figures. And we did, and we're going to be able to do two additional blocks because of those alternates. So that $51,000 savings is obviously not enough to do another street. If we wanted to spend more, we could apply that to the street patching program. We did get bid numbers for that as part of this project, but we already have a $90,000 street patching program in 2020, and we believe that's more than sufficient to address a lot of our problem areas. So streets and alleys, those savings are really good bid numbers and allow us to do all of our work. You know, one of our alternate options was to do one less alley. Dan Manis did drive that alley last week. It really is in rough shape. We would not recommend pulling back on an alley this year. We're already doing one less, three alleys instead of four than we had generally planned to, and that was one way we had reallocated more money to street resurfacing this year. So our recommendation is to continue the alley program as planned. Skokie Valley Trail, this is actually good news. The Village of Northfield is a lead on a grant application. We were able to obtain an additional grant for this project. It just means that work's not going to happen until 2021, given the grant timeline. So that's money we had planned to spend this year that would get pushed to '21. Brick Street Maintenance, this is another one, like the streets and alleys, we would be doing all the work we had planned. Another really good bid response allows us to save $38,000. So we're not doing less work, we're just saving money by having some good competitive bids. Street Patching, last year, the board may recall, we had spent $200,000 Another really good bid response allows us to save $38,000. So we're not doing less work, we're just saving money by having some good competitive bids. Street patching, last year, the board may recall, we had spent $200,000 out of reserve to start a patching program, and our plan is to fund that every year moving forward. We feel that's very important, given the condition of our roadways, and we do not recommend any reduction in that program for 2020. Sidewalk replacement, a minimal reduction of 10%. This is deferring mudjacking, basically where instead of removing the entire square and replacing it, we're basically lifting the square back up into place. That's a $7,000 savings. What we would be looking to do is go back into the impacted zone, which is zone three in 2021, and get that work done at that time if we're unable to do it this year. And sidewalk replacement is another type of program where, you know, we do have them come out sometimes twice in a year. So if there's that opportunity, we may be able to revisit it later in the year as well. Payment marking and cracked sealing, we don't recommend any reductions to those programs. We think we should complete all that work. Those are important programs that should move forward. Traffic calming, this has generally been a line item that we've looked at as discretionary to some degree, and we have deferred really since the recession. So this was the attempt and effort in 2020 to get this back in the budget and start this work. Given that it's not as critical as some of our meat and potatoes infrastructure, we recommend deferring that at least until 2021 and reviewing that during the budget process. Curb replacement is a pretty substantial reduction of 80%. This is another project somewhat like traffic calming that took, took the brunt of some of our savings efforts during the recession. It doesn't really create trip hazards like sidewalks do, as long as the curbs are still functioning as intended but are, you know, a little bit cracked or bumpy, that's, that's okay, not ideal but okay. So we're recommending a pretty significant reduction there in savings and something we'd be looking at funding at a higher level in 2021 if the budget allows. And then pavement rejuvenation, this was a new program we talked to the board about last fall. You know, a one-year deferral has a minimal impact on the long-term condition of our streets. We wouldn't recommend deferring this in future years, but as we're looking to reduce our expenses right now, this is an opportunity to do so. So that brings us to about $222,000 in potential savings that we can review during the course of the year. And then depending on how our revenues shake out and our other expenses, we can either reallocate the savings to the engineering program next year, or we can use it to backfill some of the reserve that we know we're going to lose during the COVID-19 pandemic in the general fund. Because we transferred dollars from the general fund to the engineering program, and we could just reduce that transfer by $222,000. Not a decision we need to make right now or shouldn't make right now, but it's something to think about as we look at these options.
I think, I think it might be helpful if we had the nominal amount. Is there an echo?
Yes, yes.
Let me see if I can fix that.
Better.
Okay. It may have just been my iPad for some reason. So anyways, I think it'd be helpful for the board in materials that, that get circulated later this week and next week if we have the actual nominal amount. So what's the total street resurfacing budget? The bid came in 51 to the good. You know, what's the street patching budget? We don't want to, you know, you're recommending not to cut it, just so we have sort of a picture of, you know, how this looks relative, you know, before and after in essence, or, you know, before and proposed.
Sure, absolutely. We will certainly do that, and we can get that out to the board this week.
Yeah, the other thing I think, you know, we don't know what, where exactly the, the revenue scenarios are, but it might be helpful to have, you know, sort of Plan B and Plan C on the shelf at a minimum and have, have some thinking about if we needed another quarter million in capital, you know, do we have levers that we can still pull at this point in time? Or, you know, are we committed? Are there other, are there other places in the capital budget if we, if we wanted to go that route?
Yeah. Unfortunately, you know, the bulk of our capital is the engineering program and SURF, which is our next slide. So there are not a lot of other type of, you know, facility-type projects or other capital that we can look at deferring. This is really the bulk of it. But, you know, we, we are working on, you know, contingency expense savings should, you know, the stay-at-home order be extended, you know, much longer than any of us hope for or anticipate. But that, that probably doesn't necessarily come out of infrastructure at that point.
And is, is this list sort of comprehensive? This is everything related to sort of the engineering program that's in the general fund? Or are there items that are not on this list where you're either already committed or there's no deferral suggested?
This is comprehensive. The only thing it doesn't include is Central Avenue, which would be, is planned to be funded with bond proceeds.
My question that all these are warm weather projects from the look at them, is that correct?
Yeah. Dan and Bridgette, do you want to jump in and talk about when, when some of this work would be done?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, Dan, please jump in if I have this, if my facts are incorrect, but with the village board award of these programs at the next village board meeting, we'd be looking to start in early May on street resurfacing, alley, and brick street maintenance as well. So, Trustee Kennedy, you're correct. We could potentially look at a fall program perhaps for a couple, maybe brick street maintenance, but in general, we like to get the work done in the summer months.
So we really need to make a decision fairly quickly then about the scope of these projects, I take it?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, then I'm going to go on to the next slide here. We'll, we'll continue this engineering discussion at our April 28th meeting when we have these items on the agenda. We'll have some of that revenue analysis at that time as well, and that's when we'll be looking for a decision, at least on the big three, the street resurfacing, the alley maintenance, and the brick street maintenance, as those are bids that are ready to go and contracts for, up for approval. And then the last item here is our capital equipment replacement fund. This is kind of grouped into three different sections. Those recommended for deferral, those not recommended for deferral, and the purchases that are already in progress. I'm going to start at the bottom in terms of the purchases in progress. For better or worse, we've been very efficient in getting our vehicles and equipment replaced and doing a lot of that work to prepare late in 2019 so we're ready to go at the start of this year, for any of us could imagine the COVID pandemic. So the fire utility truck, the ambulance, the pickup trucks, the public works and the police squad cars, these have all been approved by the board. The orders have been placed. A number of the vehicles have either already been delivered to us and are now going for outfitting or are on the dealer's sites, and those dollars have, for all intents and purposes, been expended. So there's no savings to be had there. The three items in the middle not recommended for deferral, the fire self-contained breathing apparatus, that's an item that we have deferred for several years now while we've been trying to procure an assistance for firefighters grant. We've been unable to receive the grant, and it's time where that equipment does need to be replaced. We've looked at and asked of whether we can stagger the replacements, so as not to spend all $250,000 at one time. And talking with Chief Blasney, that's just not an option for a couple reasons. One is some of this equipment is staged on our various apparatus, and we're not, the firefighters move around from station to station or apparatus to apparatus, so they need to be familiar and know what type of SCBE they're picking up before they're about to go into a potential fire. So they need to all have the same material for consistency purposes. And then also, the new technology has alarms that go off sooner that the oxygen in their tanks reaches a certain level. And if we have those detection devices going off at different times, depending on the device being worn, it can cause confusion on the fire ground and lead to potential safety issues. So it's not something we can reduce from a budget standpoint, nor do we recommend for deferral. The phone system replacement, a smaller budget dollar amount. The reason we're not recommending deferral is because at the end of this year, our phone system would no longer have any support, and that would be problematic, given the amount of phones that we have and how often they're used. Peter is doing some legwork to see if we can do something through Microsoft Teams that may substantially reduce or eliminate this expense. And there may be some good news on that, but we're not there yet. But we are looking to see if there are ways to lower that cost this year before we move forward. And then the public works large dump truck, this is a year, I believe, five of six of a long-term plan to renew, replace one of these each year. We had replaced six of these all at one time back, I think it was 2006, and we didn't want to find ourselves in the same position of having to replace all these trucks again at one time. This is really a critical piece of equipment for our snow and ice operations, and that is why we do not recommend deferral. So the two items that we're looking at suggesting, at least waiting on for the time being, are our sidewalk snowplow and the council chambers AV system. Sidewalk snowplows are generally equipment that we've deferred in the past, given that they're not used all that much. We use them in the business districts on a regular basis, but then on our residential sidewalks, only when there's four inches of snow or more. We have several of these in the fleet. If it does break down, it may cause the service to take a little bit longer to complete, but that, that's really the extent of the impact. And it's something that we can look at replacing in 2021 without a major impact on our service level or our operations. The council chambers AV, the equipment's just old. It tends to break down from time to time, and we call in our service company to repair it. We've been doing that for the last year or two. It works fine in that regard. We're still able to get our meetings up live, record them, rebroadcast them. So right now, we're recommending that we defer that. And as we talked about on a previous slide, we can revisit these later in the year. We're still asking staff to prepare the bid specifications for these projects so that when we make the decision if we want to proceed, we're ready to do so. So it gives us a little bit of flexibility. And that's about $240,000 in savings. Somewhat similar to the engineering fund, if we don't spend these monies, we have a couple of different ways we can allocate it. We can just basically bank the savings to the SURF and apply it to next year's SURF program, or we can reduce our general fund transfer from the SURF and use this savings to backfill our reserve. Once again, not a decision we need to make now or a discussion we need to have now, something we can look at later in the year when we have more information. That is it for the general fund expense analysis. We continue to review our expenses on a regular basis. You know, anything that's, you know, not an essential expense is being reviewed before we spend it. We're trying to tighten our belts as best we can, and we are looking at contingency plans should, you know, the stay-at-home order extend or the economy really not rebound as much as we hope.
So I think there's some additional information that staff will be providing to the board over the next week. And as Mr. Berman suggested, the three big items, we sort of have to come to a decision on as they are, you know, some will work generally and we receive good bids on them. So, you know, revenue scenarios in particular will be helpful context here. The, the actual sort of nominal amounts, so we can sort of look before and after in terms of the proposal. And, you know, hopefully we'll get that, you guys will get that out in time, so the trustees will have a chance to digest it and actually, you know, have a conversation with staff with any, any specific question. Because, you know, we're certainly not, it's not like we're reopening the budget, but you sort of have to refresh your memory on where the budget is and, and where we're going to end up. And as part of those revenue scenarios, you know, I've also asked them to show where the reserves are, to sort of have, here's where we started the year, here's what the budget shows, here's what our best guess on sort of a low and a high scenario for revenue are, and then as a result, where would the reserves be and, and how comfortable do we feel as a board with those reserves? Again, the good news is, you know, the reserves are actually very solid, and this is a much different situation than the Village was in sort of at the recession when we were actually drawing down reserves and they got quite, quite low. So we do have a rainy day fund for a rainy day, and this isn't exactly a rainy day, but it's, it's pretty darn close. It's actually rainier probably than we would have anticipated.
All right. So more to come on that, and yes, we will certainly get this information out to the board well before, when the packet typically goes out, so we can have time to have discussions with everybody and make sure we're all on the same page and have all your questions answered before the meeting.
So can I just add, I'm sorry, I just wanted to add two additional things I think would be helpful for us to be looking at as we're preparing for making decisions on what to do about the SURF this year. And you're obviously going to be looking at different scenarios in terms of what could happen and things like that. We likely could have some better information two more weeks anyways in terms of how long this stay-at-home is going to be in place, so that should be helpful. I just wondered, excuse me, if it would be helpful, would be helpful to just see, if we do decide we're going to defer some of these items, for example, items from the SURF or whatever, it might just be helpful to get a sense of what the impact would this, would be on the SURF in 2021. So, because I just don't know, if we defer these items for next year, does that mean there's items that were in the SURF that we were hoping to do in 2021 that won't get done? So just, I think that'd be something that would be helpful for us to be aware of as we're making this decision. And then the second thing is just, I think it's really, I thank you guys for spending the time looking at this and looking at ways that we can be saving money and trying to project. And I guess the only other question I would ask is, and, you know, I hate to bring this up, but at some point, depending on what these scenarios show, I just wonder if there's something that we should be looking at regarding salaries and staff? And what, so we're talking about saving here on, on capital and investment side, and I just think we should be balancing all the, all the areas where potentially we're, where we're spending our money, so.
Thank you. We can certainly address that as we move forward. So I appreciate the comments, and we'll, we'll have something certainly on the SURF side for the next meeting. And, you know, as, as we had discussed earlier, we are looking at all of our, you know, contingency options. You know, at this point, we don't know how long the pandemic's going to last until we have a better handle on that. You know, we're not ready to make other decisions or recommendations, but we'll continue to review the budget and make, and bring recommendations to the board as they're appropriate.
Great. Thank you.
And Trustee Kennedy, I think that is, that is the extent of the finance committee report?
That is correct.
Okay, so we'll move on to the...
Wait, I think Trustee Plunkett may have a question.
Yeah, sorry, I kept pushing mute and un-mute there. I have a question on the engineering, on the, the couple of live items, yeah, the street resurfacing, the alley maintenance, and the brick street maintenance. You know, this is great that there are savings. It looks like we're also doing more work than we planned. Is there an alternate where we do, I mean, I know it went out to bid, and so maybe you can't change that anymore, but is the, you know, is the first alternate where we, you know, initially thought we were going to do, is that still on the table?
So for the street resurfacing, our recommendation on April 28th is going to be to award the base bid and alternates one and two, to do two additional blocks. So all the streets that we bid, which is more work than we had planned to do, we're going to, we're recommending for approval. So that $51,000 savings, we could apply that, we have a quantity number in the bid for street patching. So if we wanted to do more work, we have that option to do it. On the alley side, we don't have that similar option. We're doing all the alleys that we had bid out. So that $43,000 savings, it can't be applied to more alley work. You know, we could move that into another line item like brick street maintenance or street patching to do more of that work or reallocate it to one of the other programs. The brick street maintenance, that's one, if we wanted to fully fund our maintenance programs, we could take that $38,000 savings and do more brick street maintenance than we thought. So that is an option in the bid, you know, is a way to try to tighten the belt a little bit and save some money. That's not what we're recommending, but that is, you know, option three that we had presented to the board in the packet was to fully fund our maintenance programs and do all of that work, which would be, it's $110,000 brick street maintenance program. We just got good bid pricing, so we're able to do all the work we wanted to do for less than $110,000.
So I guess my question was on the street resurfacing, the alternate one and two. We're obviously recommending to go forward, but that is more work than we, you know, we're hoping to do this summer. Is that something that we should be, you know, that we should put on the table for potential savings as well?
Sorry, I misunderstood. So to give some context to that, an alternate one is about $80,000, which is one street, and alternate two is $88,000, which is two streets. So we're looking at about $160,000, $170,000 that we could look at as additional savings and not do that extra work.
Okay. I didn't know, you know, you've got something, I mean, you obviously, staff is not recommending that, but I just, you know, I wanted to know, you know, what those alternates were and, you know, kind of a general feeling of, you know, is that another, what, $180,000 that, you know, we should think about, or do we think we're okay?
Yeah, that's a, both Trustee Dodd and Trustee Plunkett, good suggestions. I think that should be sort of part of that, that, you know, here's, here's what the nominal amount is, and here are the pieces that make up that nominal amount, and let's see what the numbers look like to see if the board feels like, you know, putting another $167, $70,000, $80,000 in the bank is something we want to do, given what the future might hold here. So, good suggestion.
About Mike, why, do you have a, do you have a theory as to why the bidding came in so favorable at this moment?
I'd ask Dan, Bridget, any thoughts or what you're hearing out there in the kind of construction world as to why maybe we got such good bids?
Dan, I defer to you on this one. I don't, I don't have a good sense on, on why, other than timing. Timing is critical, and we hit it at the right time before contractors were all booked up. But beyond that, I don't know if there's any other information we can provide.
Yeah, oh, I've been, good evening, Dan Manas, village engineer. All I've really been hearing is that contractors just aren't booked up yet, and some of their margins are starting to come down as they're bidding right now, hoping to, you know, be busy for the summer.
Because we should probably take that into account when we're, when we're considering whether to just bank that extra work. Because if we're getting an unusually good deal, and we know that we have a huge amount of work to be done, it'd be a shame to, I think, to sort of pass that up now.
That's absolutely part of the conversation, trustee Kennedy. You're absolutely right.
Good. And so do we have any opportunity here? I mean, I got, again, we just don't know, it's kind of going back to, do we have an opportunity here? So this potential savings of, again, we're just focusing on one number here, and I know that's not the intent, but this potential savings of $51,000 for street resurfacing or whatever, can we do more? Or are we going to, or are we going to cap that savings regardless of what happened? Because we've already bid all, we've already bid all the work that we planned, plus the additional work, and so this savings was going to be in place regardless of whether, you know, COVID-19 hit us or not?
Yeah, and would it be, hi, this, go ahead, Dan, go ahead.
Oh, no, this is Ryan Kearney, project manager in engineering. I oversee the road program. One thing I just wanted to bring up quickly regarding what we end up, if we end up awarding a contractor, the contractor for this project. We can award the base bid plus the alternates at this time, and if we go into the summer and we realize we need to utilize some of these savings with these alternates, we can tell the contractor that we're removing those streets from the project. In terms of MFT funding, IDOT doesn't have a problem with us removing streets from the program, but we're not allowed to add any additional streets besides the locations we identified for resurfacing, as well as the locations we already pre-identified for payment patching, if there was additional funding.
Does that apply to brick street maintenance as well, or just asphalt and concrete?
The brick street program, that uses just village funds, so we have a little more flexibility with that decision.
Thank you.
So there may be some, so there may be some optionality here in terms of being able to make a decision, you know, we could award the contract and frankly defer the final decision on those last two alternates, maybe for a couple of months?
Correct. There are, when school is still in session, we did stage the project to help avoid some of the traffic in those areas, and the alternates were based on, one of the alternates was based on the early stages, but we can work with the contractor on the scheduling, let them know where we're at. And again, a majority of the base bid, which ended up being 2.13 miles of streets, we can tell them that that's still, would still be part of the project, and the additional .2 miles which make up the alternates would be a contingency.
So I guess I just want to make sure I understand, thank you for that, Ryan, but so just, if we wanted, if we decided because of what trustee Kennedy was saying, which is this, we're getting really good bidding, and, you know, these contractors want work, and, and I'm not saying we're going to do this, and we're feeling like we've got this rainy day fund, as President Valinsky has referred to, and we're feeling, could we do, could we do this potential savings of $51,000 of street resurfacing? Could we get, bid out more work, or if we already bid all that we can do, so that $51,000 savings, we're going to get, we can't spend it, at least on rainy street resurfacing?
So what Mike Braman mentioned earlier regarding where we can put that $51,000, we can do additional patching in those locations that we identified in the bid document. For example, we identified Green Bay Road or Lake Avenue as locations where we can go to and do patching if we have additional funding. But IDOT is very strict in terms of the MFT funding. Whatever we noted in the original resolution in January and then on the bid document, those are the only locations we can do in the project. So if we have that $51,000, we'll be able to utilize that in patching. However, if we don't have that $51,000, we could either find, do the other street patching program, or postpone some of that work until next year.
And just to add to that, in a normal year, we would have recommended spending that $51,000 to do the patching that was in the bid. But because we're not in a normal year, and we're already doing a substantial patching program of $90,000 in a different line item, we felt we could not expend those funds and save a little bit of money this year.
Got it. Thank you.
Good. Thank you for that extra clarity. That was, that was very helpful.
Yes.
Okay. So I think we'll move on to the administration committee, which is trustee Dodd.
Yes. Let me make sure I'm on mute. Sorry. Yeah, the first item we have on the agenda is presentation of the COVID-19 Service Business Assistance Program. I assume we're going to do the service business first and then the resident assistant, I'm assuming?
Right. Yes. So, and just a presentation again, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Hallgren. He's going to make the presentation here, and then I'm sure I'll have something to say as I usually do.
Right. So after, at the last board meeting, we approved the economic relief program for $375,000 for the municipal sales tax rebate program. Just to give you a quick update on that, we have now approved about 50% of those funds. So we have had just over 40 businesses apply for those, and we have dispersed $187,000 at the end of this week. So just wanted to give you a quick highlight on that aspect of it. But as we were looking at the sales tax rebate program, it only impacted a certain component of the village's business population, those that remitted municipal sales tax. So during the last board meeting, there was a request to look at the potential for providing financial assistance to those service organizations that exist within the community. So what we did when we started to build out the concept of the Service Business Assistance Grant was really looking to look at businesses that were impacted by the governor's executive order. We also wanted to impact businesses that helped us support the retail and the restaurants in our business districts, as well as just kind of provide a general convenience to our customers throughout the village. So the intent of this program is really providing that immediate cash assistance to our local businesses that help to bridge them towards larger programs that might be offered at the state and federal level. So again, when we started looking at these program rules, it was really looking to impact those particular businesses that were, would, would help to support other retail businesses, or also provided a high level of service to our residents and customers that come to the community. So I want to run through a couple of those program rules real quickly. They need to have a blue blood business license, they need to be located within one of the village's commercial districts. Again, mirroring the rules that we use for the sales tax rebate program, the revenues need to be somewhere between $50,000 and $7.5 million. We mirrored the rules about it being part of a, that the business cannot be part of a chain, franchise, a private club, or a home occupation, and also wanted to impact businesses that saw a 15% decrease in revenues since March of 2020. So the next part of really parsing down that business grouping was looking at certain business types that were eligible. So staff went through and analyzed businesses that were impacted by the governor's or executive order for shutdown, and we kind of categorized them into these particular areas. These were the businesses most heavily impacted by those shutdowns, and these were the ones that we were trying to provide cash assistance to through this program.
Yeah, and I think importantly, you know, not just impacted, but also sort of important to the vitality of the districts, you know, the other comments that Mr. Hallgren mentioned earlier on. It's, it's the sort of those components that make a retail business district whole, if you will.
So based upon those initial, those eligibility rules, we have determined that there's about 104 businesses that would fall within these parameters. Now, the next part of, after determining the eligibility in those businesses that we were looking at, one of the next areas was determining how the grants would be dispersed. Service-based organizations pose a bit of a challenge as in comparison to retail sales tax businesses. The village receives sales tax information for our businesses throughout the community that file a state ST1. However, we don't have any insight into service-based organizations and the types of revenues that they have on an annual basis. So one of the new requirements associated with this is the requirement to submit tax returns to help verify our annual, verify annual revenues. Then following the municipal sales tax rebate, we would look to rebate one-half of 1% of annual revenues. But where it starts to get a little bit different is that there would be a first round and a second round associated with this grant. The first round would limit assistance to $1,500. Then based upon how well the program is performing, how many, how much we've dispersed during a certain period of time, we may look to do a second round of payments that help to provide additional cash assistance to businesses that may have been eligible for more than that $1,500 initial benefit. So ultimately, at the end of the day, a business could not receive more than what they would have received, than, they would not have received more than a half of 1%, similar to the retail sales tax base. And then the last part of this, because there are some overlaps between the municipal sales tax and the service-based businesses, anybody who received grant funds through the first rebate program would have their revenues adjusted down so that they would only be receiving a rebate based upon those services that are the non-sales tax piece. Ultimately, if we were to do the initial benefit, the maximum benefit of $1,500 for these 104 businesses, we'd look at a program of just over $150,000.
Yeah, and the difficulty, as, as Mr. Hallgren mentioned, is we don't know, on the sales tax rebate program, we knew what all the numbers were for all the eligible businesses, so we could give a pretty good estimate here. If you didn't limit the initial round, we would have no idea how much the budget would be, because we have no idea how much revenue these businesses do. So the thought was, rather than sort of have an open enrollment period where, you know, we wait a month or six weeks and have everybody submit an application, and then we add it up and say, oh, okay, it would be this much, get the money to them near immediately, and then have another round after some period of time. You know, I think the reason that's important is, as Eric said, you know, we, we've designed these programs to be a bridge to these other governmental programs. And I will tell you that I know the SBA's process is underway, and I think even some of the very, very early people who applied and are very important customers to their banks have actually received some money now. But my understanding is that for the vast majority of people, this process is a slog. I mean, you've probably seen the news stories about how long this is taking. But I have some context, and maybe trustee Sullivan can add to this, because he's in the banking industry as well. I talked to a business colleague who works at a mid-sized bank, you know, a regional mid-sized bank, and he told me that they processed SBA loan volume equal to 15 years of their normal SBA applications in the past two weeks. So if anybody's wondering why it's overwhelmed, it's because, you know, everybody on the planet is going to a program and to a system and a process that isn't used to it. And that was the idea here, was to build a bridge to make sure that the stores that close their doors, reopen their doors, and to make sure the stores that are operating at far below optimal levels will continue to operate and can make it to that bigger And I do want to also, there were some emails that were received around the family service center, so I want to just address that quickly. The staff has been in communication with them, and it's fairly certain that if the organization has less than 500 employees, it is eligible under the very same program that we're trying to bridge for the businesses. So the, what's known as the Paycheck Protection Program, that program provides for an SBA loan in the amount of two and a half months of average payroll. And that loan is 100% forgivable if it is expended as designated, which is primarily to be paid on payroll. So that organization should be eligible for a significant amount of aid, and the staff has forwarded, I believe, right, you come for, Eric, you, you've sent to the folks there the information that we received from Congresswoman Shakowsky's office with all the details of where to find more information.
Right. Yes, we have forwarded information over to that organization.
But do we give that to the board? I'm confused.
I'm sorry?
Were you saying that that information was forwarded to us as a board?
No, 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 to, 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 to the, there were emails that came in on, on this item about the, the family service center. And I just wanted to let the board know that there's been communication with them, and that from, that they're also very likely eligible for this very same aid. It's very specific that not-for-profits are eligible for this aid, small not-for-profits. And larger not-for-profits, I was on a conference call this week, and Senator Durbin said that larger not-for-profits, and the example he gave was like, for example, a Catholic charities that has far more than 500 employees, they're talking about $60 billion right now in, in the next stimulus bill that would be designated for larger not-for-profits. So hopefully, the family service center will be able to bridge their funding gap that they outlined in their emails, or at least a good portion of it, through the PPP program, as they're calling it.
May I speak to the family service center?
Certainly.
I, I'm on the board of the family service center, and I'm, I'm not here certainly on, on their behalf or to view any of this program on their behalf. But I would simply say that, that the center is aware of the PPP program. We have filed a, an application through our bank, Wynn Trust. We are one of the thousands and thousands of people that you just described that are lost in the ether somewhere because, because we're, we're small and our banking relationship is small. So they are, they have processed this through, through their accountant and through their bank, and that is, that is in works. I have spoken with the executive director, and I think they do understand that the focus of the service program that we're speaking about is not intended to necessarily cover organizations that provide themselves valuable services, but rather organizations that have some tie to the other economic aspects of our village. So I, I think that they appreciate that this simply isn't a program that is intended to benefit them or organizations that provide services like them.
Thank you, trustee Brown. That's, that's very helpful clarification for, for everyone who saw the emails as well. Trustee Sullivan, were you, I see, I don't know, your, your dot is like a little circle. Does that mean you're off mute and you were going to add something?
Oh, no, I mean, you're talking a lot, a lot of, first of all, I think on... Oh, no, I mean, you're talking a lot, a lot of, first of all, I think, Eric, how you presented this, a compliment on how you put this together, I think this is terrific. I think it's, you guys continue to demonstrate ways that we as a village can help out. I will, you know, there's been a lot of talk about the paycheck protection program. Just to put it in perspective, through last night, I think the SBA had seen 951,000 applications for $249 billion. So it's more than 65% applied for, for a $350 billion program. We are an institution that's doing this, and the good news is, we are actually up and running, and I think, and I looked at it, we have, we funded already almost 1,000 applications for just over a billion dollars of loans. Some of that's come from clients that I work with, and I will tell you, the emails, I wish I could share them, because there are some emails that are very inspirational of people that are just near tears of, as they see what their businesses are struggling, and just being able to put some money in their accounts under this program, which is very flexible, and it does save them, it saves their employees, or it helps them, I shouldn't say it saves them, but it really does, it's meaningful. So, you know, I think what this, what you put together on this Service Business Assistance Grant Program is a nice compliment, and I think this is the stuff we should be doing right now.
Yeah, but the money under the program primarily goes to payroll, to keeping people on the payroll of these, of these local businesses, you know, or nationwide of all the businesses. So it's also positive for that.
Well, it goes to payroll, it keeps people employed, it goes to helping them pay their rent, their utilities, their debt obligations. So it's actually, it's a very flexible program. And, you know, it's a little bit complex getting heads around it, but I think we're seeing some very good applications come in, and like I said, it's been helpful. It helps keep people employed.
Well, how do we do that?
Can I get, I have a question about our sales tax rebate program?
Sure, yes.
So Eric, I think you said you're about half, 75 so far?
Yes, so we fit it, we finalized our third batch of payments that will go out at the end of this week. So we have now processed 43 rebates that total about $188,000.
You know, where do you expect to be with that? And is there, I think there's been some outreach to let businesses know about this that may not necessarily, you know, getting to chamber information. I mean, there's obviously a lot of businesses that have not yet taken advantage of this. So I kind of wanted to find out, you know, how we were reaching out to those businesses, and how and where we thought this would, you know, what percentage we would end up with.
So I don't know if we had a particular expectation of where we would be at at this stage. I certainly think that realizing 50% three weeks into a program is very positive progress. But as far as continued outreach, aside from our normal channels of pushing the information through the website, social media, and e-news, our community development group continues to reach out directly to businesses. We have a listing of who we feel is eligible and at what value, and we will continue to reach out to them and offer them, provide them guidance towards that business. We're really trying to take that hands-on approach where we will reach out to all the businesses that are on that listing and try to provide them an opportunity to apply for that program.
Eric, the chamber doing the same?
I don't know the specific efforts, I can follow up with Julie and find out what their efforts are to reach out to their business group. I do know that as part of their weekly or their semi-weekly email blast, they do continue to link information to, to link to the business program, but we can find out what kind of specific outreach that they are doing.
Is there, is there any reason why a business sticking with the sales tax program, their business wouldn't apply and wouldn't be happy to take the money?
I can't speak directly to why they might not have, the things that I can think of are, they might not have seen a decline of 15%. I mean, there's, there's that one potential, or they're very, or they wanna, they wanna tease that out before they actually apply for the program, that's one potential thought that I have. Other than that, I'm not 100% certain as to why particular businesses have not applied at this point in time.
Do you think that for the service program, that there may be some reluctance for a business to disclose revenues?
Yes, that's certainly something that we struggled with, we went back and forth on how we would verify their revenues. We felt that the tax return would be the most straightforward way to provide that information.
Well, but in any event, the amount of the grant is directly correlated to your revenue, and because it's a public expenditure of funds, it's obviously at a minimum subject to FOIA, but it's also, well, first off, it's in our board packets, because that was information requested by the board, and it would be in our annual treasurer's report that lists every payment that we make. So to some extent, if you, that sort of comes with the territory, if you want the money, it's based on your revenue, so someone could back into what your revenue is, even if you don't provide, even if you weren't providing a tax return that was subject to disclosure. But sort of, you know, I think, I think the sales tax businesses realize that people will know what their revenue is if they, if they really think about what the program's all about and how it works.
And so I just want to speak to that, actually, because I do believe, I had a conversation with Mike Bremen about this, and I do believe we have had one or two businesses who haven't wanted to apply for the, for the sales tax rebate program, because they didn't want to share, because ultimately, they do feel that that's sharing their revenues. Why couldn't we change this assist, and I'm concerned about that here, I mean, about requiring these businesses to submit their tax returns? I mean, ultimately, our goal is to help these businesses in whatever way we can. Do we really need for them to submit their tax returns, and couldn't we just do, well, we could do one of two things, we could simplify the program and just give everybody $1,500, every business $1,500? I'm not proposing that, I'm saying, or...
I think the concern with that is, we've got sales tax businesses that didn't get $1,500, that didn't, that don't generate enough revenue.
True, but, I mean, over, I looked at that, I mean, over 70% are getting more than $1,500. So then the other option would be that we do, we have, you know, instead of asking somebody to submit revenue, maybe we just do ranges, two ranges, you're, there's stuff, you get, you know, $1,000, or you get $1,500, and people with revenues under this amount, you know, where they don't have to necessarily disclose their full, and wouldn't we be open to that?
Well, here's, here's a thought, because Mr. Bremen had mentioned that, this conversation to me, maybe what we could have, since the maximum benefit initially is $1,500, which corresponds, I believe, to $300,000 in revenue, if they would certify, because, and we had talked, and Mr. Stein has some experience in this in other communities, where instead of the tax return, you could also submit, you know, a certified letter from your accountant, but maybe instead of, if you're above $300,000, you just certify that you're above $300,000, so you're only eligible for the $1,500.
I just, I have to say that as we've gotten into even the sales tax rebate program, I'm a little uncomfortable that we're sharing even the amounts of the sales tax amounts that we're giving.
We have to, that's state law. I don't think we can avoid not disclosing a payment that a governmental body makes. Mr. Stein, is that correct? Or Ms. Malloy, if you're on, is that correct?
Well, yeah, I mean, essentially because we are issuing a payment, we are making that payment based upon the sales tax generation and a percentage of that. It's not necessarily disclosing what they have made as far as sales tax or what the sales tax is, but it's easily figured out. So anytime we make a payment to somebody, we have to disclose that amount.
How do we disclose that? How do we have to disclose it? Where, like?
This is, we're required to do it as part of the monthly dispersment report.
Okay.
And then, as President Walensky has indicated, in the annual treasurer's report, we disclose by vendor, for lack of a better, we have made in payments to that vendor for the entire year. So if we only have one payment to that vendor, then you know what's going on.
Well, and so, I guess, okay.
This is Mike, if I could jump in real quick. So we are going slightly above and beyond that monthly dispersment report, because there was a separate item on the agenda, now, based on, you know, direction from the board and the way the disaster declaration is drafted, that we would have a separate approval process for these grants. So they are called out above and beyond the, you know, the monthly dispersment report in your packet, and will be in the next couple or subsequent packets as well.
Unless we want to change that. I mean, so I, I guess I'm just asking the question of the board, I think, I mean, now that we're, you know, proceeding on down this path of also doing this Service Business Assistance Grant Program, I just, I want to be sensitive to these businesses, and so, fine, maybe we have to put it on the monthly dispersment report, but does it really need to be shared? That level of detail need to be shared with us the way it is right now? We're, I mean, we want to know what businesses are applying, but I don't know, we need to know what amounts these businesses are getting.
Well, I would like to know. This is Trustee Kennedy, I think the public will want to know. I honestly do. I don't think that they're going to want us to give money to businesses and then not tell them what, who got what. I just think that that sort of violates our sense of being a transparent organization.
I would agree with that, and I think, I'm also curious where, if we know that it's a projected cost of $156,000 now, I'm sort of curious if we can estimate what the top end of the cost if we continue the program, and that is, you know, suggested in the memo. So can you give me a sense of where this could go?
No, that was the, that was the idea, Trustee Kersman, to max it out at 156.
That's for the first, well, what I heard was just over $150,000 for the first initial benefit.
Right, and if everybody applied for the maximum benefit, there would be no second benefit. The second benefit would be sort of a prorata of what was left over of the 156.
Okay, all right, that's, thank you, appreciate that.
Yeah, sorry, I'm not making that clear during that piece, but yeah, that was...
Neither of us, neither of us mentioned that, that's our fault.
So we have, the sales tax program has had one or two or how many, I think, I think Mr. Bremen spoke to this, a very small handful of businesses have declined to participate.
So out of the 50 businesses, so I'll start at a global level, we have about 126 businesses that were eligible for the sales tax program. We have had 50 applications, and out of those 50 applications, we have had one business withdraw after we followed up with them to let them know that the information would be provided as part of our dispersment reports. So one out of the 50 has withdrawn.
Eric, that's, that's very helpful, thank you. That suggests that we really don't have an issue for the sales tax program, that the, at least for the people that have applied successfully so far, the disclosure that could be made and the backing into whatever their revenues might be really isn't an issue, and that we don't have a problem in that program that needs to be addressed. We may on the service program. And my thought is that we proceed with the program as it's been proposed, and if it turns out that, that no one shows up because of the disclosure, then maybe we rethink the application requirements. But at least so far, the program is up and running and running very well, and disclosure doesn't seem to be an issue.
Have we set deadlines on any of these programs to apply?
No, there have not been any application deadlines that were included as part of the sales tax or the service business at this point in time.
Two, one deadline, the deadline that may be imposed, though, would be when the declaration, when there's no more of an emergency, right? We can then extend it if there's some, you know, some residual effects, you know, a month or two down the road, but essentially, this is, while the declaration's in effect, this program can still be in effect, and if it's not, then we'd have to take some other action to extend just this program.
Well, I'm just thinking of the businesses that have not yet applied. I mean, maybe, you know, when they finally, you know, could a business apply for this in November, saying, you know, I lost all this revenue, but I just didn't, you know, I didn't even know if my business would survive, so I didn't know if I was going to apply for this.
I think the thought was that this would run, again, because it's a bridge, they obviously made it, I think the thought was that this would run through the governor's stay-at-home order at a minimum, and maybe a little bit beyond it to sort of say, hey, we're shutting it down now. But that was, that was my thought at least. Right now, it runs with the emergency declarations, and presumably, we're going to keep extending those emergency declarations as long as the stay-at-home order is still, applies. And that goes till April 30th right now, but I think most people believe that in some way, shape, or form, that's going to be extended. I, Mr. Stein, Mr. Bremen, that's your sense is well around the stay-at-home order, isn't it?
Yeah, it very well, very likely will be extended for another couple of weeks, maybe a month, but this is also new, so we don't know at this point, but, you know, I wouldn't be surprised, from what I have.
Just a comment here, a previous comment suggested that this would save jobs, and so I'm curious whether there's anything baked into this where we would know that this saved jobs.
This is, my comment was in reference to the PPP program, Trustee Kersman. So as a requirement of the PPP program, that's the SBA's program, 75% of the funds have to be expended on payroll for the loan to be forgiven, and then there are rules around bringing back all of your employees and timing requirements on that for the loan to be forgiven. And most of these businesses are trying to max, as you'd expect, are trying to maximize the forgiveness of the loan. So it's the federal government's program that is driving that.
Yeah, I'm familiar with that program. I think I'm picking up on Trustee Sullivan's comment about our Service Business Assistance Grant Program idea.
I don't think he was referring, I thought he was referring also to the same...
Yeah, I think, correct, I, no, Trustee Kersman, I was referring to the PPP, but I also think this does help them and how they use it. Hopefully, it will save their operation in whatever form. But no, the job specifically is a requirement under the Payment Protection Program.
Okay, thanks. All right, can I suggest that we move on to the next item?
All right, so I'm going to handle the next item here, resident assistance programs. This is a question that had come up at our previous meeting when we were discussing the sales tax rebate program in terms of what programs are out there for residents. And we just have a couple of slides here, and staff isn't recommending any new programs, but we've outlined what's happening at the federal, the state level, and what programs we already have in place to assist our residents in will met. So at the federal level, there's the Economic Injury Payment Check, up to $1,200 per adult and $500 per child, depending on income, that'll be forthcoming in the next few weeks to some of our residents who qualify. The federal government has also expanded eligibility for unemployment benefits to capture additional workers who generally wouldn't be eligible for unemployment. There's also additional funds available, $600 a week, that go on top of state benefits, and the potential to extend the benefits for 13 extra weeks. So in Illinois, individuals are eligible for unemployment for up to 26 weeks, this would take that potentially up to 39 weeks. And then the income tax deadline has been extended from April 15th to July 15th. At the state level, there's several unemployment actions that the state has taken to expand the program to capture more of our residents. One is there's a seven-day waiting period to apply for benefits, that waiting period has been waived. There's also expanded eligibility to address various issues or impacts caused by the COVID-19 pandemic that are listed here on the slide. Similar to the federal level, the state income tax filing deadline has been extended to July 15th. We'll actually see that impact our cash flows and the timing of some of our income tax receipts, and that's an analysis we'll be working on and providing to the board at a later date, but unrelated to these assistance programs here. And then the governor's also urged utilities and the Illinois Commerce Commission and broadband providers to extend their service offerings, to waive late fees, stop, shut offs, and most of those entities have complied. So there's, there's pretty substantial benefits available to those in need at the federal and state level right now. and state level right now that are going to help out our residents. And then I think, you know, really what we want to focus on here in Womet are our local programs that we have available to help our residents in need. The first is our emergency housing assistance program. We refer to this as EHAP. This is different than the housing assistance program under Housing Our Own. Emergency assistance has always been managed and funded by the village and continues to be managed and funded by the village, so we allocate $3,000 a year, it's not a large amount, to fund emergency assistance. So this is really short-term assistance, somebody who may have a job loss and can't pay a utility bill, or has a domestic abuse situation and needs alternate housing for a period of time, or the death of a spouse and, and needs help with some expenses related to that. And we generally grant up to $500 for that. There are income guidelines, that is $91,000 or less for a family of four. These income guidelines are higher than a lot of the other financial assistance programs that are available through the township or Housing Our Own Womet. And the purpose of that is to capture individuals who aren't at the very low end of the spectrum, but who also are running into challenges and difficulties and who need help. This is the type of program where if a resident is having difficulty paying a stormwater utility fee this year due to a job loss, that would be eligible for reimbursement through this program. We have paid for water bills in the past as part of the emergency housing assistance funding. The other program we have that is supported by the village is Housing Our Own Womet. As you may recall, this was a program that was privatized back in 2014. It's really been successful in raising funds to help individuals. We've expanded the number of folks that we're able to provide property and rental tax assistance to, and because of the success we've had in raising funds through Housing Our Own Womet, we do have the capacity to take on more applicants. And it's certainly something we'll be publicizing through our social media. We'll also be working with the social worker in Nutria Township. If she is working with more of our residents who need help, she'll know that we have that assistance available through Housing Our Own Womet. And while it's funded privately, most of the management and administration continues to be done by village staff and our community development department. Under Resident Support Services, there's food pantries, four of them listed in the memo throughout the community, that our police social worker communicates with our residents in need and gives that information to them if they need that. We also have the Community Caretaker Program. We'll have an update for the board on that during our COVID update later this week, but that's been a really well-received and helpful program, especially to our most vulnerable residents. In terms of utility service, something different we're doing now is waiving late fees as part of the pandemic, and we're suspending all water shut-offs. When we look at the late fees that we usually apply, that's about a $60,000, benefit's not the right word, but impact to residents in our community who really are most in need. So, you know, when we have residents not paying water bills, we want to do everything we can to work with them on payment plans, keep the water on, and not penalize them any further, especially right now. Vehicle stickers, we've extended the due date from April 15th to May 15th, and we're also pushing back when we would apply the late fee. The late fee can be substantial. It's double the sticker purchase fee of $80. So depending on how many vehicles a home may have, that late, late fee can become onerous. So we're going to push that back until later this summer, and that buys us more time to reevaluate whether we need to waive the late fee in total or push it back later into the year. And we're also waiving our building permit extension fees. Obviously, there are certain projects that may have stopped because homeowners don't want contractors in their house. We don't want to penalize somebody for that. And while not significant, I think from a customer service standpoint, it was important to do. We've waived, we've waived the convenience fee that you have to pay if you use your cell phone to pay for your commuter parking at either the Metro or CTA lot. So there's a host of different programs we already have in place here at the village, and that maybe we've expanded slightly to address it through the pandemic here, and we'll certainly make sure that we're publicizing these so our residents in need are aware of that and can get the support and assistance they need.
Right, I think we need to expand the emergency housing assistance program. I think it's, it's always traditionally been $3,000 a year. Has that been discussed?
Yeah, so, I mean, obviously, history doesn't really, isn't really relevant right now. We generally have not spent anywhere close to the $3,000. You know, I think we do have the flexibility, you know, given where our general fund reserve is to, if we do get a lot of applications coming in, we can come back to the board and look at increasing that funding. And if a lot of the applications are relative to the stormwater utility fee, you know, there's also a reserve that's being built up in that fund that could also help pay for that emergency assistance. So I think we have the flexibility, should we see an influx of applications, to really help out as many residents as we can.
Thanks.
That's it on both the service assistance program and the resident assistance programs. We'll continue to provide updates on these as the board meets and as we are extending our disaster declarations.
So I believe that is all under administration for Trustee Dodd, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll move on to municipal services, Trustee Sullivan.
Yep, hold on. Sorry, screen just pointed at me. Yep, we have one item this evening at 6:41, which is discussion on Central Avenue and Downtown Streetscape project update. I'm going to assume I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Bremen or Ms. Berger.
Ms. Berger is going to take this one.
Got it.
Good evening. So real briefly, the Central Avenue project has been on a bit of a roller coaster the last several months. The agenda packet included a memo that we provided back in February, which talked about the deferral of the project, and the deferral was not necessarily for a few months, but it was really indefinite. We did not know the fate of our project once the, we learned from the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning that the funding was no longer available. That all changed about two weeks ago. We learned that through some reallocation of funds and a prioritization of all the regional projects, that Central Avenue was deemed essential and something that was worthy of funding this year. So that's the good news, and instead of the April letting, we are eligible for the June state letting. In order for that to happen, though, at the next village board meeting, there are a couple actions that we'll be asking the village board to consider, and that is to allocate the funds for the construction and construction engineering services to fund and support this project. As soon as we learned that the project was backed up, back on the table, we worked with Lucas over in community development and started talking to the Chamber and some businesses just to float the schedule and how we would go about rebuilding this project. Unfortunately, all the work that we did in 2019 to plan and prepare, we really had to put that on the back burner and take another look at it. I would say the silver lining in all this and, and the deferral in the schedule is that it allows us to push much of the work into 2021. And the initial feedback that we're getting from the businesses is to do some utility work perhaps this fall, in October and November, to get the water main in, and then pick up the road and streetscape work as soon as we can, when the weather breaks next winter, in either February or March, to start the road work and conclude the streetscape work in August of next year. So a quick snapshot of the budget here, the funding sources. Recall that we received about $1 million from the state for a streetscape grant. The federal portion is a little over $4 million. The village share in the general fund is $2.6 million, and in the water fund, this is 100% village at $2.3 million for a total of a $10 million project. And we'll go through the, the budget in greater detail in the agenda materials at the next meeting. You'll see in the footnotes that there's a little bit of a cash flow difference in the village share for the general fund. We have to expense $3.35 million because some of that is reimbursable by the state. So we'll explain that in detail in the memo.
And this is, Mike, you had said that this was a, this was a bond-funded project, so not out of our cash flows immediately, but, you know, spread over 20, 30 years, whatever, however long we would bond it.
Correct. That was a decision made by the board as part of the 2020 budget process, where we had committed to not using annual road program monies for these one-time larger grant funded projects, because this would have been our entire road program in 2021. So the idea at the time was to roll this into the debt issuance for the stormwater project, and given the timing of this project now, you know, that debt may not even necessarily hit until the FY '22 tax levy. So the delay maybe buys us an additional year of when we put it on the levy. So yeah, the general fund would, both the general fund and the water fund portions would be bond-funded.
And no actions required tonight. This is just sort of a heads up that here's where we are now on the project, because the last communication was this was dead for now. This was dead indefinitely.
That's, that's correct.
Okay. Any questions at this point in time?
Bridget, one question here. We, we should understand that this is sort of use it or lose it. We don't have the opportunity to make use of this, say, a year from now.
Yeah, unfortunately, the way the federal funding works is we're really at the mercy of the agency that administers the funds, and so when there's an opportunity to use it, the recommendation is always to do so because there's no guarantee that it will be there in future years. There's just another community with another project waiting in line to, to obtain that funding.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so Trustee Sullivan, I believe that was your only item on the budget, on the agenda?
Yep, the other item was approved on consent.
So I will move on to the Public Safety Committee, Trustee Kersman.
All items on consent.
Judiciary Committee is Trustee Plonkett.
No report.
There are no reports from our special committees. Item seven is new business, and there's no new business to discuss. So I will move on to item eight, which is adjournment. May I have a motion to adjourn?
No move.
That was Trustee Sullivan, and is there a second?
Second item.
I believe Trustee Barrow got that one in.
President Walensky, sorry to interrupt. We did have a public comment in regards to the, the grant program.
Okay.
And we needed to speak at the record. Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
Yes, I'm sorry. If I missed that, I apologize. Thank you for interrupting.
No, just wanted to make sure I was ready to the record. We received an email from Dr. Angela J. Calb. Hello, Village Board of Womet. This email requests the board to consider a relief package for service-based businesses in Womet. I am the owner, as well as the only pediatric dentist in Womet for the last 24 years. My practice has been in the same location during these 24 years, and so I like to think of us as a staple of the Womet's health community. In unison with our governor and the American Dental Association, we have been shut down since March 17th, 2020, and desperately need payroll help for our now limited staff in need assistance with paying suppliers, as some items have become more costly due to the pandemic. Thank you in advance for your consideration, Dr. Angela Calb.
Yeah, and that, and that letter, that email was in the board's package on page 256 as well, so members of the board did see that in advance of meeting. But Alex, thank you very much for interjecting and making sure it got in the minutes as well. So there, there was a motion on the table. I believe I had a motion from Trustee Sullivan and a second from Trustee Barrow on adjournment. So all who's in favor of the motion to adjourn, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, we stand adjourned at 8:44 PM. Thank you, everyone, for your patience and for working with us on this technology solution. It's, it's actually, I think, working reasonably well. We're, we're conducting business, so thank you very much.